The legislature is back from recess. We have the IT folks have updated and rebooted. We are now on. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Maybe I can just start from the beginning. Is that all right? I'll talk fine.
Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So Bill 2235 makes two changes to Public Law 3430, which was enacted back in July 13th of 2017, and it granted legal authorization for the operation of electronic signage that was granted a variance or a notice of action by the Guam Land Use Commission on or prior to May 15, 2017, despite the legal opinion of the Office of the Attorney General that such signage was illegal. However, Public Law 3430 did not extend the same protection to those offered other forms of signage, such as static signs. So the owners of static signs and other forms of signage have also incurred cost in securing legal approval for their signs through the Guam Land Use Commission and in setting up their signage. Owners of static signs and other signs were also impacted by the Office of the Attorney General, despite having also been granted variances or a notice of action by the Guam Land Use Commission prior to May 15, 2017. So hence, the only fair and equitable remedy is to give the same legal protection to static signs and all other forms of signage that were granted a variance or a notice of action by the Guam Land Use Commission on or before May 15, 2017. All signs which obtain the proper legal approval should be entitled to the same protection afforded under electronic signs under this protection. So the amendment, or this bill then changes the wording from just electronic signage to include an other signage. And it also makes this bill, makes the law stronger, that it provides further that all conditions required in the notice of action approving the variances shall continue, and the Guam Land Use Commission may renew the variances authorized by this subsection C under similar or additional conditions. Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity for Bill 2235, and I'm looking forward to the comments. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sutus Massey. Thank you, Senator Moylan. On the main motion, if not, to motion Senator Moylan to put it in the third reading, the voting file.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Our motion to move 2235 to third reading voting file, Madam Speaker.
On that motion without any objection, motion carries. Bill number 44, Vice Speaker Nelson.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill, place Bill number 44-35 into the third reading file and discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I believe one of our colleagues has an amendment that she would like to proffer.
Sutus Massey, Vice Speaker. Senator Marsh Taitino, you are recognized.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. I would like to propose the amendment to Bill number 44-35. On line 12, page 1, to amend section 2 of the bill to read. Section 2, section 3133B, 5 of chapter 3, title 17, Guam Code annotated as amended, to read. Number 5, failure of the EFSC to meet in any month shall result in a $250 fine for each voting member absent from, so crossing out which, absent from an EFSC meeting. The fine shall be imposed on the absent member for every meeting missed that resulted in a lack of quorum. Such fine shall be deposited into the GDOE Interscholastic Sports Program. The fine is imposed by this subitem shall apply to an absent member for a meeting that resulted in a lack of quorum unless the EFSC excuses such absent member pursuant to a majority vote of its members at its next meeting. The reasons for, the reason for absence and vote record shall be included in its meeting minutes and made available to the public. The EFSC shall develop guidelines on excusing absent members from meetings for unforeseen or other circumstances. So I propose this amendment because as we've spoken about already in this session, we realize that many of us are affected by extenuating circumstances that are beyond our control. We have personal or family illnesses. We have off-island health care as a major portion of our health care system. We have natural disasters and man-made ones such as grass fires to contend with, among other issues. And so this amendment provides some due consideration in the process that's already been in place, where it says that rules and regulations are to be developed. So it's establishing that there is to be a system, there is to be structure in place, that this is not going to just open up a situation where there is not due diligence. It is to be voted on in the next meeting so that there is supposed, there is to be a public record and that it is transparent, everything that has occurred. It allows it additionally to be something that is reviewable by the public at large, but those of us within the government as well. Sutus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Taitino. On the amendment, Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this amendment. However, I believe though that in the discussion yesterday, as the author was discussing this bill, 44-34, it was noted that the composition of the members to this education financial supervisory commission included divisions who have the option of sending representatives. So the idea that any one person may not be available to attend a meeting is actually not definitely applicable in this situation, given that the membership is representative of a body. And so the likelihood that no one will show is therefore lessened or lower, and the absence of any representative from a body really shows a lack of effort or commitment by that member agency. So I don't necessarily agree that we should have an opt-out for people who should be mandated to attend these critical meetings, as the author mentioned yesterday, it being a critical nature, of a critical nature, and the information that is provided there is relevant and important on a timely and, bless you, by the way, on a timely and, that was for a sneeze, which may not be audible. But if, in fact, these meetings are necessary and they should be regular and everyone should come to the table as required, and we're going to impose fines for people who are not, who don't come and result in a quorum not being met, then, you know, let's stick with that very strict obligation here. Because I think that once we start doing opt-outs, we really, we lose the effect of imposing fines, if in fact, the imposition of a fine is to substantiate the importance and the importance of attendance. But mostly, Madam Speaker, it is the nature of the membership and the ability of the member to designate someone so that it is no one person absolutely that must attend, suggests to me that this amendment is not necessarily, and if we're in fact going to put teeth to it and be very clear about who we're going to find, then I think that the bill 4435, as proposed, with the minor amendment that was made yesterday to, you know, make it clear that it's a voting member that is going to be fined, that that is sufficient. And so that's just my position. I think that if you're going to put teeth, stick with teeth, don't put so many outs. And in fact, it's really not limited. It's quite open-ended and optional. So I would object to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Anyone else on the amendment, on the Taitino amendment? If not, there has been an objection. All those in favor of Senator Marsh Taitino's amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Raise it up high, guys. 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Motion carries. Vice Speaker, on the motion to put it down, please.
Madam Speaker, I'd make a motion to.
Put it on the vote.
The third reading file, as stated.
The voting file. On that, on that motion to put it into the voting file without any objection, motion carries. Bill number 7, Senator Sabina.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to propose an amendment to Bill 7-35. The amendment reads, "The director of a member agency which fails to submit the required report and/or position statement within the timeline stipulated herein shall pay an administrative fine of $250." If I may say that when I first saw the bill, I was, I was in full support of it, but after hearing the testimony given by the good senator from PD, I understand the duress that a lot of our agencies face when it comes to responding to their, responding to the regulatory role, considering that we, these same agencies are also in charge of providing comments to military projects such as the MIT, which is volumes and volumes of documents, and they already have difficulty responding to those on a timely matter. And to place an additional, I guess, responsibility and a fine, attach a fine to it, I feel that, you know, I feel that the $250 fine is a good compromise. I believe the application review committee plays a critical role, and it's very important that they provide the position statements. And I've seen on some occasions that they failed to do so, and at the risk of our, of our resources. So I still feel that it's important that we have a fine, but at a lesser amount.
Thank you. On the motion, Senator Tello, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I understand the sentiments of the previous speaker with regards to that, the amount of work, but Madam Speaker, Bill 7-35, in this bill, on the, on the second page, has an area that has to create rules and regulations through the AAA process. And this is going to be created by the Department of Land Management, and they are the chairman of this ARC. They're part of the group of regulatory agencies that will contribute. So that being said, I'm pretty sure there's going to be rules in there that will allow them a little bit of leeway, allow them to not over-bombard the ARC with recommendations or require them to provide a report on a particular variance change, you know, right away, or even, now, Madam Speaker, we're already allowing 75 days for the ARC to act upon a request for a report. That's 75 days compared to the 30 days that are, is current law. So we're giving them that extra leeway right there. And then as well, we're going to give them the ability to create rules and regulations to ensure, Madam Speaker, that the ARC is not overwhelmed with reports, and I'm pretty sure that they're, they're going to make sure these rules are going to specify that. So with all due respect, I do object to the amendment.
There has been, there has been an objection. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Marsh, you are recognized. Yes?
Point of information, Senator Taitino. Point of information, Madam Speaker, or, you know, I have to request this body to, for a conflict of interest to a certain member on the floor, if they are going to speak on it or vote on it. I think that we, I need a call for a conflict of interest on any movement on this bill from a member who is related to a director that affects this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker.
Vice Speaker, state your point of inquiry.
I believe that if there is perhaps a conflict of entry, conflict, conflict of interest, perhaps we could consult legal.
Vice Speaker, yes, I am very much aware of that, and I was just.
Or you can make the call.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Speaker, Majority Leader. I'm going to take a moment's recess on this matter. Legislature is back from recess. There has been a, a point of inquiry in reference to a possible potential conflict of interest, and at this time, I will allow, based on previous bills that have been proffered on this floor, for the better interest of that, I will allow the senator to speak if she feels that it would not impede on the decision on, and if that question is rose on voting, we will take up the motion at the time. At this time, anyone else, there has been an objection on the floor. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment by Senator Sabina Perez, signify by raising your hand. There has been an objection on the floor. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment proffered by Senator Perez, please signify by raising your hand so I can address you. I see Senator Marsh Taitino, and was that you, Senator Theresa Lyte? Senator Marsh Taitino, you are recognized on the amendment by Senator Perez.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. And just to make it clear, at the very beginning, I had noted my relationship with the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. He is my spouse, and I have been speaking with legal all throughout the process and have a prepared statement for when we get to voting. So I just, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. It just seems to me that this fine is excessive. $1,000, it was pointed out that for FOIA, it's $1,000, and there are some substantial differences, at least in my mind. One of the previous senators had mentioned that there's a large difference between having to produce a document versus procure it. And producing the document, an assessment by these different agencies could be, there could be all kinds of issues that are beyond their control, which they may or may not be able to write into the rules and regulations. There is no guarantee that they will be able to have forethought of everything that they may be contending with. And so to, to put all our eggs in a basket, if you will, that everything is going to be resolved in rules and regulations is not a guarantee. And with the excessiveness in my assessment of this fine, there's no guarantee for it in extension necessarily, but also in the FOIA example that was used by the author of Bill 7-35, there's a judge involved. So a judge can weigh in at this higher level, whereas in this situation, there is no judge. And we've been talking about Bill 44 just recently, and for Bill 44, that has had in place a $250 fine for quite a while. And so this amendment seems to put that type of a fine at least on par with what's already in place. It makes it equitable to these other regulations that are out there. And so it makes sense to me to follow what's already in place, rather than something that has, is, is dealing with another type of an issue. Sutus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Taitino. Anyone else wishing to speak on Senator Perez's amendment? If not, Senator Perez, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Regarding the reduction in fines, I feel that this is a good compromise because the role of our application review committee is so critical, but at the same time, our agencies are under duress because of the huge amount of workload that they have from civilian as well as military projects. And having looked through the SEIS, you know, we're talking about thousands and thousands of pages, and I think it's fair, it's a fair amount, and I think that's, that's why I proposed the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. There has been an objection. All those who support Senator Sabina Perez's amendment, please signify by raising your Senator Taitino.
Yes, so it's at this point that I would ask my colleagues to decide if they feel that there is a conflict of interest in whether I should be recused for this potential conflict.
Ladies and gentlemen, I do apologize. I will take at this time a consideration to, in motion form, for those who wish Senator Taitino to vote for this amendment, signify by raising your hand. Taitino to vote for this amendment, signify by raising your hand. To, in support to vote for the Senator Perez amendment, signify by raising your hand. Move to allow Senator Sabi, Senator Marsh Taitino to vote for this amendment. Motion fails. All those in favor of Senator Sabina Perez's amendment, there has been an objection, please signify by raising your hand. We have seven votes. Motion fails. On the motion to put it on the third reading file, Senator Taitino, you are acknowledged. Senator Taitino.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 7-35 to the third reading, to the voting file.
On that motion without any objection, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have exhausted the, the agenda in front of me. I'm going to ask for a moment's recess as I
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Vice Speaker, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I believe there are some, there are also some nominations pending, so notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to go back into motions to see if we can add those nominations on.
Without any objection, motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized. Senator Theresa Lai, you are recognized.
We are in motions. Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the nomination of Teresa C. Obispo to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees to the voting file.
To put on the agenda first, right? To put on the agenda first, please.
Place in legislative concurrence. On the agenda, yes.
On, to put Teresa Obispo onto the agenda as GMH, Guam Memorial Hospital's Board of Directors. On that motion without any objection, motion carries. Senator Lai, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the appointment of Sarah M. Thomas Nnedadog to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees onto the
Agenda.
Agenda.
On that motion without any objection, motion carries. Senator Theresa.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Finally, I'd like to move the appointment of Mr. Paul S. N. Shimizu to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors onto the agenda.
On that motion without any objection, motion carries. On, on the motion, Senator Theresa, to place it onto the voting file? One by one, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move that we place the nomination of Teresa C. Obispo to serve as a member of the GMHA Board of Trustees and to confirm.
To the voting file.
To, move it to the voting file and, and with the recommendation, well, and to confirm.
To confirm. On that motion without any objection, motion carries. Senator Theresa.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to, that we move the nomination of Sarah M. Thomas Nnedadog as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees to the voting file.
On that motion without any objection, motion carries. Senator Theresa, you're recognized.
I move the nomination of Paul S. N. Shimizu to serve as a member of GBB Board of Directors to the voting file.
On that motion without any objection, motion We will just take a moment's recess, and we'll be right back. Eight bills total, and the old appointments. The 35th Guam Legislature's back from recess. I'm going to address the Majority Leader, Vice Speaker Nelson, to, on the motion
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker, I would like to make a motion that we take a brief recess till 5:30 and return.
So that we can vote on
Yes, to return for voting.
All the engrossed bills and all the appointments. For now.
So does that include all the bills?
No, all, the only engrossed bills right now, just based on the standing rules, it has to be only the engrossed bills right now, unless there's
So I think it's only eight, I believe it's only eight bills that we will be voting on.
Right, and all the appointments.
And our appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. On that motion without any objection, motion carries.